Good morning. We will begin this morning's council meeting with Pastor Tommy Haynes from the Real Church leading us in an invocation, and then after that we'll ask Councilwoman Salyer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Thank you. Father, we just thank you so much for today and just this opportunity to pause before you and to thank you for this great state of Oklahoma and the city of Oklahoma City. Father, we pray today that you would give us wisdom as we walk through this day. Help us to listen to your Holy Spirit and to make decisions that honor you and honor the people of the state. And Father, we pray today for each of these men and women in this room, God, that as they conduct their business, God, that you would guide them, guide their families, guide their lives. And we just thank you for this beautiful weather and this beautiful time together. In your name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
(inaudible)
Again, good morning. We will call the meeting to order, and we've got several proclamations to share. And so, excuse me. You know, for somebody who's been on the council for six years now, you would think I would know all of these steps, but Mayor Cornet does such a great job that we often just kind of go into a trance and let him carry this part out without paying as too much attention. But to begin with, today we have several proclamations. The first one is to identify the Building Safety Month, and we've got members of our staff here, so would you please join me? And we're going to have Francis, in just a moment, read the proclamation.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I don't have that one. If we could hold it for just a minute and do the others?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize.
Yes, please. Thank you. Well, no wonder it goes so smoothly when Mayor Cornet... Festival of the Arts?
Okay.
Okay. Well, let's move on then for just a moment, and we'll bring Peter and everybody from the Festival of the Arts, the Artist Council, to join me. And we've got a proclamation that the clerk will read.
We didn't want to upstate these words.
I know.
(laughing) Whereas the 51st Annual Festival of the Arts produced by the Arts Council of Oklahoma City will officially open on Tuesday, April 25th, for six days of exciting visual and performing arts activities. Whereas the Festival of the Arts is recognized nationally as one of the most spectacular fine arts festivals in America, featuring more than 140 visual artists, live entertainment on four stages, delicious local food, and activities for all ages. Whereas the Arts Festival of Oklahoma City is continuing its commitment to making the Festival of the Arts a sustainable, zero landfill event by utilizing recyclable and compostable materials and promoting eco-conscious practices. Receptacles for recycling and composting will be available all across the Festival of the Arts grounds. Whereas 2017 Festival of the Arts co-chairs Debbie Forshi and Steve Bolton lead a team of more than 40 different committees and 5,000 volunteers who donate their time, talents, and resources to produce the Festival of the Arts. Whereas the Festival of the Arts is Oklahoma City's annual ride of spring and focuses on the Arts Council of Oklahoma City's mission to bring the arts and the community together. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 25th through 30th as Festival of the Arts Week in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens to join in honoring the Arts Council of Oklahoma City, the volunteers, and the artists who take part in this event.
Thank you, Francis. Please join me in congratulating the Arts Council.[403.12][403.12](applause) Debbie, Debbie, would you like to say a few words? And we'll just let anyone else speak.
Well, we hope every one of you come out and enjoy the food, buy art, bring your families. We have plenty of seating. It is great, a great venue, sandwiched between City Hall and the Civic Center. It is absolutely perfect.
I just want to say a big thank you to the city of Oklahoma City and especially the unheralded workers that have helped us in so many ways. I just can't even begin to tell you how many different departments with the city of Oklahoma City work on this event and help us troubleshoot issues and work through issues, and it's been a wonderful experience at every turn working with the city of Oklahoma City, and we absolutely love that relationship.
Thank you, Peter, and I echo that. They've done a great job. Your staff has done a great job. We have a great view from our office to oversee all the activity, and it takes a lot of people and a lot of effort to pull this off. And as it's identified in the proclamation, several years ago you really began to focus on recycling and making this as clean of a festival as possible, and y'all have just done a tremendous job, you know, and as soon as the festival is over, just within a few days, we're back to normal and everything looks great. But it's, it's a great opportunity for those who don't come down to downtown that often to make a trip, experience what's going on in downtown, and especially, as Debbie said, check out all the art and food. There's always great food. Yeah, and so it's always a great time. We love it coming out of our busy season to get to experience this fun part of Oklahoma City. So again, help me welcome them and congratulate them on another great year.[529.04][529.04](applause) Francis, should we move to the police at this time or?
We can go back. I have the other one now.
That's fine. Okay. Would you all please join me again?
(inaudible).
Yes. Okay. And thank you for having so many staff members join us today. Francis, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment affecting our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. Whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of the dedicated members of the International Code Council who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. The council includes building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry. The international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation, are used by most US cities, counties, and states. These modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, and earthquakes. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. Whereas code officials partners in community safety and economic growth, the theme for the Building Safety Month 2017 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient structures, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety, and conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month in Oklahoma City.
Now Francis identified two important aspects of what you all do. One, focus on safety, and you know, that's an easy thing for us to remember when we get calls saying we'd like to see this process, the inspection process go quicker. We always remind the citizens that it's for their best interest that you all are given the proper time and, and resources to do a thorough job. And then also sustainability, it becomes an ever-increasing important aspect of what you all do. So would you like to share a few words?
Yes, I would. Vice Mayor, first want to say thank you on behalf of all the Development Center and Development Services Department. It is a team effort with all of us. Men and women you see up here represent a small number of our actual workforce that do perform the inspections on a daily basis. Last year we completed a little over 121,000 inspections in the city of Oklahoma City. So as you can imagine, we're, you know, we, we do a lot of stuff. So it's, it's interesting to get out and see all these things, but on behalf of all of us, we want to thank the city council and you, Vice Mayor, for this opportunity to bring awareness to Building Safety Month. Even though we practice it 365 days a year, it, it does help. Thank you, sir.
And Chief City and, and the other chiefs, if, and representatives of the FOP, if you'll join me. This is Police Appreciation Month, and we're so grateful for the men and women who service in that capacity. And Francis, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas police officers make a valuable contribution to our community by serving and protecting our citizens. Whereas the dedication and desire of Oklahoma City police officers to preserve a peaceful quality of life for all citizens is our foremost goal. Daily life-threatening hazards are an accepted requirement of the profession and most appreciated by a grateful public. Whereas certain events within the month of May lend themselves toward the positive recognition of Oklahoma City law enforcement personnel. Whereas the city wishes to announce the following days of observance and the activities planned in recognition thereof. May 1st is National Law Day, May 5th Oklahoma City Police Department Awards Banquet, May 14th through 20th is National Police Week, May 15th National Police Officers Memorial Day, May 19th Oklahoma City Police Memorial Service, and May 19th Oklahoma State Law Enforcement Memorial Service. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of May as Police Appreciation Month in Oklahoma City in recognition of the outstanding performance, service, and competence exhibited by the Oklahoma City police officers.
Chief, one thing I regret is that most citizens do not get to know police officers like members of the council get to know you and, and the deputy chiefs and all members of, of the staff that we come in contact. And what they may fail to realize is that every police officer's main concern is the safety of the citizens of Oklahoma City, and you're trying to, you know, protect them in a variety of ways, and so there's, there's never any effort to try to harm people or make their lives more difficult. You're just concerned about safety.
That's correct, and you know, I've always said officers, the officers I've worked with, the one thing they all have in common, and that's a huge heart, and that heart is wanting to help their community, help the people in that community. So I want to thank the mayor and council for recognizing us for this month. I'd like to point out probably the most important date on this proclamation is May 19th where we recognize and memorialize our fallen officers who died in the line of duty. It's in front of our station at headquarters. It's open to the public. It's at 2:00 in the afternoon, and everybody's welcome to attend that. And like I said, it's probably the most important date on there. I want to thank the FOP, all my staff, deputy chiefs, and you know, we have a good police department primarily for one reason. We have good people. We have good officers, and that's the reason, and we have a community that supports them. So thank you again very much.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation one more time.[1004.01][1004.01](applause) Oh, you don't have to write a proclamation. You're good. And speaking of votes, we do have a resolution that I need to bring forward, and this will require a vote. And this is our Teacher of the Month, so if Mr. Patrick Dennis, would you please join us up here? And we're going to have the Mrs. Kersey read the resolution for this.
Whereas Patrick Dennis has been named Teacher of the Month for April 2017 by Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Patrick moved to Oklahoma from Australia when he was 16 and attended the University of Central Oklahoma where he received a technology education degree. Patrick has been an educator for 18 years and works as a technology education teacher at Roosevelt Middle School. Patrick's teaching philosophy is based on providing a structured classroom which allows for a safe environment for fun while learning, and most importantly, making students feel valued. Whereas Patrick is a national board certified teacher, a certified Marzano teacher, and is a member of the Oklahoma State Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics Standards Committee. Patrick has served as a lead engineer for the school's first robotics team for two years, which challenges students to design, build, and program robots for competitive events. Whereas Patrick also serves as a school leader for one-to-one technology and is a member of the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support Team. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Patrick Dennis on his selection as the April 2017 Teacher of the Month by Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma
Patrick, would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say that my teaching philosophy is to be a good teacher, you have to absolutely love what you're teaching, and you have to genuinely enjoy working with your students. And I've been privileged to teach technology education. I get to teach my students welding. We have CNC plasma cutters that cut out all kinds of cool projects. We have laser cutters. We shoot rockets, and so I genuinely love what I teach. And after being in a room with them for almost 20 years now, I act like them and think like them, so I enjoy hanging out with them as well. So today's honor, this is huge. I feel valued and respected as an educator, and so for that I thank you.
Okay, Patrick, just a second. So, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? It's unanimous. This is certainly a lot more effort than just being on a member of the council, so[1245.01][1245.01](laughing) Mayor Cornet deserves, you know, every dollar he gets on this job, so. Anyway, well, let's move on then. We have a couple of appointments. First of all is the appointment of Richard McCowen, Kasha Egan, and Brent Wall to the Bricktown Urban Design Committee.
(inaudible).
And we'll vote on that. It's approved unanimously. Then the appointment of Carl Edwards, Dr. Raul Font, and Pete White. Where's that name? Anyway, to the School Bond Advisory Board. And Jim, this is a brand-new advisory board.
It is. The first meeting will be Thursday, and this is to oversee the school bonds, the 19, or the 2016 school bonds.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
Move the items.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, approved unanimously. Then we have the Journal of Council Proceedings. The first item is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 11th. The second one is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 28th.
Move the items.
Is there a second? And that's approved unanimously. Next is the request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, there's several on page 21. Page 21 under item 9H1A 2521 El Toro, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item B 3811 North Kentucky, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C 2805 Northwest 12th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item F 1505 Southwest 44th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G 1620 Northeast 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I 3220 Southwest 104th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to item 9I1. Item C 3811 North Kentucky, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item F 1620 Northeast 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item H 3220 Southwest 104th Terrace, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Thank you. Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? We don't have to vote on that, do we? Yeah, thank you. Okay, next is revocable permits. And the first one we have is with the DNA racing to hold the Anthem Brewing Classic May 6th at West Stanley Draper Drive between Southeast 104th Street and Southeast 119th Street. Chad Hodges, I believe, would you please share with us what's going on?
Yes, this is going to serve as the Oklahoma State Road Race, so we'll offer six races that day, and the winner of each of those races will be the Oklahoma State champion in the road race category. Lake Draper is a great venue. If you haven't been out there lately, they've redone the North Road, and it's amazing. It'll be a great host to the, the road race.
Great, thank you. All right, let's see. Todd, that's in Ward 4.
It is. I just wanted to say congratulations on putting this event on out there. I think it's going to be a great event in what is probably one of the prettiest places in, in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Everybody's looking forward to it. It's beautiful out there right now.
It is. It's going to be great. So with that, can I move for approval, please?
Thank you.
And we're also item E on the revocable permit as well.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll vote on that one in just a moment. Thank you. I'll, we'll vote on this one now, and it's approved unanimously. Next is the revocable right-of-way for Girls on the Run Central Oklahoma to hold the Girls on the Run of Oklahoma County 5K on May 20th. And Leslie?
Yes.
Would you please let us, yeah, share with us?
I'm the executive director of Girls on the Run of Central Oklahoma. We are a group that inspire girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident with a fun experience-based curriculum that creatively integrates running. We provide girls 3rd through 5th grade with a 10-week program of self-esteem and empowerment lessons that entail fun running games where they're training for a 5K. Our 5K on May 20th is a celebration of their goals and accomplishments, so it's just a celebratory fun run for the girls, and this will be our 7th annual 5K. We have been able to stick to parks in Oklahoma City, the beautiful Wheeler Park, for the last four years, but we outgrew it last year. So we served 400, 392 girls this year. We expect to have at least that many running buddies that are running with them, and so we had to move to the city.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this experience. This is like new to me, and it's very exciting.[1582.65][1582.65](laughing)
Oh, well, good. It's, it's new to me, too, so.[1586.15][1586.15](laughing) We're experiencing it together. John, it's in Ward 7?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I vote for approval.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Oh, thank goodness, thank you.[1600.15][1600.15](laughing) (inaudible).
Yes.[1603.15][1603.15](laughing) Okay, the next one is with Northeast OKC Renaissance to hold the One OKC on May the 6th, and Angela? Yes. Would you please tell us about the event?
Why, I'm Angela Cosby. I'm with the Lynn Institute. I'm actually a volunteer on the operations committee, so I will introduce the event chairman, Kamal Pennington, and he'll tell you how wonderful this event is.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. I'm really excited to be here, proudly from the greatest ward in Northeast, in Oklahoma City, Ward 7. And we're putting on the greatest event in Oklahoma City, I like to say, with, with One OKC. Just really quickly, One OKC is to feature the exciting Renaissance that's happening with development in Northeast Oklahoma City. And if you can imagine, it is a block party that merges the models of Better Block, H&amp; A, and the Arts Festival to stimulate and influence the Northeast Oklahoma City Renaissance. And so we are, it will feature food trucks, it will feature performances, and most, what we're really excited about is having the Building Tomorrow tent, which will feature all of the developers that have projects in Northeast Oklahoma City who will come with mock-ups of what they're going to be building and be there to visit with our community. It will also feature a community mural that allows all of the members of our community who attend to actually paint on the mural, too. So we're excited about the event. Bring your, your friends and family. It's going to have a lot of great activities there, and so we're really excited to have our event again this year.
Thank you. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to say thank you to One OKC. When we created the Northeast Renaissance Tiff District, we wanted to make sure that the community was fully engaged in the process, and so one of the things that we came up with was this whole idea of One OKC. So I just, again, want to thank the committee for your involvement and organizing this event. This is our second time having this event. The first event was held at Douglas, and this time we are having it on Northeast 23rd Street, and this is an opportunity for the community to see some, some continuation of positive things happening, especially when it comes to development in Northeast Oklahoma City. Last year we had, we did a spotlight on the Paige Woodson Schools and also Northeast Shopping Center with Mr. Shattuck and Rick Brown was there, able to answer the community's questions and talk about their development, and so the community feels very positive about One OKC. So again, thank you both, and please thank the committee for me. I know I have not been able to attend that many committee meetings, but again, thank you all for your hard work, and I encourage everyone, please go out and support this event again on May the 6th. What time does it start?
Starts at noon. Starts at noon and ends at 4:00.
All right, thank you. I vote for approval.
Okay, okay, it's been moved and seconded, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next one is the Paseo Music Festival, and we've got several people signed up to speak on that.
Laviktois.
Lav, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, Council? I'm Susan Laviktois. My address is 611 Northwest 24th Street. We incorporated Paseo Music Festival, Inc. last fall as a nonprofit corporation to be the sponsor of a free outdoor music festival held at the south edge of the Paseo neighborhood, utilizing the open area immediately northeast of the Uptown 23rd Commercial Building. I am the chairman and executive officer of the nonprofit corporation, and I've lived in the Paseo neighborhood for almost 20 years. We wanted to organize a successful festival in the first year with the hope that it would become an annual event that allowed a showcase for the many talented musicians active in the Oklahoma City area. The logical time for the inaugural event was the Memorial Day weekend, a month after Norman Music Festival and the Festival of the Arts here in downtown Oklahoma City. This is a holiday weekend, making it easier for us to recruit volunteers. Our special event application was filed in early February of this year. We worked closely with Drew Watson on this application to minimize street closings and address other issues of interest to the city. Drew was extremely knowledgeable in his recommendations to ensure a fire lane is maintained and advised us to establish a perimeter with signage proclaiming parking on one side of the street only... Or, I'm sorry, with signage proclaiming no parking on one side of the street. He also recommended not only T-shirt security, but also the use of off-duty police officers for safety. All of this has been arranged for. Drew also recommended that we contact the organization that operates the Paseo Arts Festival located five blocks to the north. One of the Paseo neighbors working on this festival said she would reach out to the Artists Association to explain our plan and be sure to let them know we plan to be supportive of all the holiday festivals that weekend. Unfortunately, email contact with the Executive Director of the Artists Association was not made until the week before the April 11th City Council meeting, the response that it was too late to arrange a meeting before Tuesday. We regret if this lack of communication in advance of the council meeting is interpretive as divisive. This honestly was never our intention. Having raised our children in the Paseo neighborhood, my family has always been supportive of the Arts Festival and sincerely believed that our music event would create a synergism and tend to introduce their arts event to people that might not have otherwise been inclined to attend. At the last council meeting, representatives of the Paseo Arts Association appeared before the council and objected to our application. A motion to continue consideration of our application for two weeks was passed, and Councilman Shadid offered to host a conference between the parties. We sent an email to Councilman Shadid that same day advising we were able, available and ready to meet at any time, but arrangements for the meeting were not able to be made until more than a week later. Kirk Frederickson and I attended that mediation meeting last Thursday afternoon, and Amanda Blakely and Colin Rosebrook represented the Paseo Artists Association. At the end of this meeting, we reached a compromise that was stated by all to be acceptable. The agreement was simply that the Paseo artists would withdraw their objections to our special event application in exchange for two concessions. Number one, we agreed not to use the name "Paseo Music Festival" for the event held this year. Number two, we agreed not to sponsor a music festival over Memorial Day weekend in future years. We sent an email on Friday morning restating the terms of agreement and requesting confirmation from Amanda and Colin. We finally received a response yesterday afternoon indicating that their board was asking that we surrender the right to use the name "Paseo Music Festival" for any event in future years regardless of the weekend upon which the event falls. We replied by noting that no party, no one party, has enforceable rights to the use of the word "Paseo" and asked them to reconsider ratification of our Thursday original agreement. Our event was conceptualized to enhance the Paseo neighborhood, provide a venue for musicians, and attract even more people to our wonderful part of town. At this time, we asked the council to approve our application for a revocable permit. We have met all rules and requirements of the events guide as outlined on the city website. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We have a few more individuals signed up to speak. The next person is Kirk Frederickson?
I did sign up, I did sign up to speak, but I think the things that I would say would probably be repetitive.
Okay.
I would like to reserve an opportunity to comment if there's some further discussion about the application.
Okay, thank you. Next is Nedra Jones?
Hi, I'm Nedra Jones, 701 Northwest 26th. I'm not quite sure what I'm doing here needs to be involved with this. I'm going to state it right quick. I live in the Paseo. I own property in Track 5, and I also live in the residential area. I have a concern, and I'm not anti-any festival, okay? I'm past president of the Artists Association years ago. We have a traffic problem. It's going to sound silly. I went out and measured our streets, and these are east-west streets. And I pulled my car opposite another car on the other side to make sure. What I have a concern with is if we had a fire in our neighborhood, that fire truck could not get down the street. And so I backed it up with numbers, and I went and I measured, and it ran anywhere from, with two cars on the street, which is what we have during festivals, bumper to bumper, because they park. You know, we have a lot of people there, which, you know, enjoy the festival, and I'm glad they do, and I'm glad they come and enjoy the festival. But the streets vary, because some of the streets were trolley streets, so they were wider. This was years ago. But anyway, the area that I have goes from 172 inches from tire to tire, from one side of the street to the other, down to 98 inches, okay? I called the fire department and talked to the battalion chief, and I said, "I need to ask you a question, and please don't laugh at me." He did. I said, "How wide is the fire truck?" And he said, "Well, we have several pieces of equipment we use." And he said, I got this back from him, and this was an email, and it says, "Most of the apparatus are nine feet, 10 inches wide, but some can be up to 10 feet with mirrors. Hope this helps." He was very kind. That, those figures added together, that was 118 inches. So that means that the 500 block and the, excuse me, the 500 block and the 600 block and 700 block of Northwest 27th, a fire truck could not get down at all. Now, the firemen are great, you know. They've been to my house a couple of times while we were waiting for an ambulance to take me to the heart hospital. I love the fire department. I think they'd get through. They'd go over yards, they'd push cars out of the way, they'd do what they needed to do to get there. But that slows them down, and this is a safety matter. I don't know if I should be addressing this, or if you could send me in the right direction, because half of that street needs to be blocked off. My granddaughter owns a home and lives there, and I also live there, and I also have a daughter and son-in-law that live there. Could somebody help me or tell me which way to go on this?
Well, I think you sharing your concerns this morning to the council is sufficient, so we appreciate you coming down and...
Shall I take this further to who should I talk to, or somebody contact me later?
Well, I think you're going to see a vote take place in just a few minutes.
Pardon?
I said, "I think you're going to see a vote take place in just a few minutes as to whether or not the council will approve the festival."
One quick question. Does the permit for the Paseo Arts Festival, is that solely Track 5, or is that for the whole residential neighborhood, too?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Track 5 is a business district. I was a Realtor for 20 years, so... Track 5. So the Artists Association really wouldn't be the one I would go to to ask for help on this, then, would it? Their permit doesn't include the residential part of the neighborhood. Is that correct?
Who's permit?
Pardon?
Who's permit? The Paseo Arts Festival permit or the music festival permit?
The Paseo artist.
Well, that's not, we're talking about a music festival.
Okay, I know that. Well, anyway, I know that, and I announced that when I come up here. I'm probably in the wrong place.
Right.
So, somebody, is there any way I could, should I talk to the fire marshal, or should I?
Well, I'll be happy to help you.
Should I sit down and let you finish this?
Do you want to, I'll help you afterwards. We'll figure out what happens with this vote, and then we'll figure out your concerns.
Okay. Well, this has nothing really to do with this vote. I just wanted to bring this up.
We're happy to help answer your questions about the fire issue.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is Fritz Robinson?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. Fritz Robinson. I live on 508 Northwest 30th Street, so I live right next door to the Arts Festival every year. I don't see any issues with the traffic, any of the things that are going on. Same with the music festival. I know that's going to increase traffic, but I've been here for 15, 16 years now, and I think it's a great thing that we're trying to expand and build on this great festival and weekend. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ed, it's in Ward 2.
We did meet. These issues are never easy. I think there are some side issues, like names and stuff like that, which really isn't, I don't think, the purview of the council. I would hope that we would focus just really on public safety and the impact on the neighborhood. I think it's clear, this is something that's never been proposed in Oklahoma City before. It's a three-day music festival, 13 hours a day until 11:00 PM, in which we're changing north-south and east-west traffic in a residential neighborhood. The large half-a-block lot on the southwest part, corner of 24th and Dewey, is now a construction zone. There's bobcats and dirt being turned through that whole area. And I think that, if you recall, in 2011, we had an issue about another festival wanting to work next, or be next to the Paseo Arts Association, and that actually went to District Court. The issue there was the city asked, tried to have part of the ordinance that we couldn't have more than one revocable permit on one weekend. And I think we've all decided that that's, we've changed that policy as a city policy. We can have as many as you want. There's an important contradistinction, I think, between that case and this one. In that one, Kathy's Market was right in the middle of the Paseo Arts Festival. There was no additional impact to the neighborhood or public safety. I mean, it was what it was. It was right in the middle. Here, you have what, a second festival, which could involve an unknown number of people, but could be in the thousands of people. There are going to be pedicabs taking people back and forth between the two festivals, and you're going to have hundreds of residents sandwiched between two festivals, the Paseo Arts Festival and then this festival. I appreciate that one citizen said there was no problems with traffic, but for years, I have heard problems with traffic and residents feeling trapped who live just south of the Paseo Arts Festival. They move south to get out of the area for that three-day weekend. They move south, they try to get to 23rd, then they can escape the neighborhood. Now you're going to sandwich them. You're going to block that north-south traffic on Dewey. You're going to block some of the traffic going east and west on 24th, and you're going to sandwich hundreds of individuals, many of which are elderly, for a three-day period between two festivals. So the fact that it is on this particular weekend, I think, introduces a unique public safety issue and a unique issue to the neighborhood. And I think that the fact that we're proposing something that's never been done before on this scale by individuals who have no previous experience with running a festival, I think is another concern. And I think Drew, Drew has met with the parties multiple times. I think in my conversations with city staff, they don't feel that the experience is there. There is a learning curve to running any kind of festival, even if it was just one day. To do a three-day festival, I think, is a whole other learning curve. We did do things like H&amp;8, which maybe there wasn't a lot of experience, but that was one night, right? Here, we're talking about three days in a row, 13 hours a day, alcohol, live music with amplification of sound throughout the neighborhood until 11:00 PM. And for that reason, I'm not ready to, I would move that we deny the application.
Let me ask you this. There was a meeting, and you attended that meeting, and it looked like there was some type of compromise, some type of agreement. Is that, can the parties continue to talk today and try to come up with some type of agreement that you would be comfortable with?
You know, I think a lot of their issues in terms of, like, trademark, do you call it "Paseo Music Festival," or do you call it, that's really between them. I don't think that here, what's being asked of the council is to, you know, close down streets, to dramatically alter traffic in this area. I think that's the issue before the council, and the impact on the neighborhood. They've said that they wanted, that they would never do this on this weekend again. I don't think that's legally binding in asking, Kenny. When we had our meeting, we asked, you know, "Could you do this later in June? Any other weekend in June, or Labor Day? There's nothing really going on on Labor Day." We were told that the principal organizer of the Paseo Music Festival, it conflicted with her schedule. So it was one individual's schedule that was causing this to be done on this weekend. To me, the needs of the many hundreds of people sandwiched between these two festivals would outweigh the need of the one individual who wants to put it on this weekend for her work schedule.
So your opposition is based upon safety?
Exclusively. I mean, the impact on the neighborhood, for years, we, this has been an issue about people being able to get in and out, and I think you're going to trap hundreds of people on this holiday weekend.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. To deny the permit. So is everybody clear it's a motion to deny the permit? So a yes vote will deny it. Okay. And the motion is approved, which denies the permit. Thank you. Okay, the next item is related to Item A that we just heard. This is the revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust for the DNA Racing Anthem Brewing Classic. Okay. Is there a second? Okay. And that's approved. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have two items. All those in favor? Thank you. It's approved unanimously. Next, we will adjourn the OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Four items. Okay, and that's approved unanimously. We will adjourn the OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistant Trust. Two items to vote on. All right, and that's approved unanimously. We will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Okay, thank you. Are there any individual considerations? Yes, Larry?
Item Z is in Zoo.
Okay, Item Z. Any other individual considerations? Okay, Larry, would you like to discuss Item Z, please?
Yes, Item Z involves a 2007 bond project for a neighborhood between Rockwell and MacArthur and 10th and 16th, Northwest 10th and Northwest 16th. It's an older neighborhood with some interesting challenges, and I'd like Eric, if you would, to come forward and just give us a brief synopsis of where we stand and what we can expect, and when the project looks like it might be done.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. So this project is under construction. The work is about 80% complete. It includes over 5.5 miles of street resurfacing and about two miles of new sidewalks in this particular area. So they are scheduled to complete by May 30th, so there's about a month... So there's about a month of work remaining. And then they'll have about forty-five days to do any punch list items. But the majority of the major construction should be done in the next five weeks.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Larry. Okay, are we ready to vote?
I have, I have one. Item N is a specifications to be advertised for bids for a street resurfacing on Northwest Tenth in between Council and Morgan. Just wanted to point that out to anybody who lives in that area. There's no timetable set yet because this is just sending out to bids, but I just wanted to mention it.
Okay, thank you, James.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, I stepped away for just a second. If I could mention seven oh-two and oh-four.
Yes.
And I just wanted to let everyone know that oh-two are the final plans and specifications to be advertised for Red Andrews Park. And there's a wonderful plan. And this, again, is one of these very nice public-private partnerships. The Midtown Renaissance Group and Neighbors, I think, I thought I saw Brian Fitzsimmons here. Brian's done the design work for the park. And it will really transform what's become a very important green space in the middle of the Cottage District and others. So Brian, thank you for your help. I know we need some more money, but we'll start on this and get it going. So thank you for your help on that. And the second item, seven oh-four, I just wanted to let the neighbors that live in the vicinity of Linwood and North Virginia, which there aren't many that live there right now, but hopefully there will be at some point, were working on traffic signal and intersection improvements. And for those that are familiar with that area, it's a very awkward intersection. And we've been looking at that for quite some time. It was mentioned as a potential bond project, so I'm very happy to see it moving ahead of that schedule. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. AP, and if we could just vote on AN like Nancy separately?
Okay, so you'd like to discuss AP and then vote on AN separately?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have a quick question for Brent. Brent, this is eighty thousand dollars in Golt bonds for job creation for McLaren Plastics. Do you know how much this entity got in state incentives?
I do not know that. We could probably calculate pretty quickly, though. It's typically, they may have qualified for up to five percent of their annual payroll over a ten-year period.
Okay.
I could get that, I could confirm that.
Now, is there any way to track these awards that we make where the people who take the jobs actually live? I mean, if, is there a way to find out with, if they live in Edmund or Moore or Norman? Or are they actually?
Not practically, because the workforce is mobile.
Okay.
When we adopted the program, it was always thought that some of the jobs would not, the people would not live here, but, but the jobs would be here and overall, the city would prosper as a whole.
Okay. Has there been any thought about using median? You know, you use an average salary of the new jobs. But you could have one executive job paying five hundred thousand dollars a year that would widely, wildly skew the numbers. Has there been any thought to using median salaries as opposed to average?
Back in, back when we created this program and created the policy, we considered medium. We considered average. And working with the chamber, we came back with, you know, what's the easiest one to identify from the BLS? And consensus came back to we would just use the average. We could take a look at that, though.
I would appreciate if you did, like, what that would do in terms of allocations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ed. So we will pull item A in and vote on that separately. And then we'll vote on the remainder of the items.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I have one more change. There is a duplicate on seven AY seven. And the municipal councillor would like seven AY seven strictly.
Okay.
It is also listed as number eight.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Thank you.
So do we need to have a vote first to delete item seven AY seven? Okay.
Just as amended.
Okay, just as amended. All right. So, Ed, we will first vote on item AN. And any discussion on that item? Okay? Okay. Second, all right. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Seven to one. Now we'll vote on the remaining items. Is there a motion?
Yes, we have a motion.
Okay. And that's approved unanimously. Okay, now we'll move to the concurrence docket. Okay, are there any individual considerations? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on this. And it's approved unanimously. Now we have items requiring separate votes. The first one is item A. A1, it's the ABC two alcohol beverage consumption for a restaurant. And this is in Ward Three. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up?
No, sir.
This was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. It's a new facility out off of I-40 in Check Hall. There's quite a bit of development going on out there. This will fit very nicely into the development. I move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. Item number two, sixty-one oh-one, Southwest Forty-Fourth Street. It's going to change from a C-four general commercial district to an I-two moderate industrial district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up for this? I move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and that's approved unanimously. The next item is item number three, three thousand East Britton Road. And we're moving from an R-one single-family residential district to an O-two general office district. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The Planning Commission approved, the staff gave its recommendation. This is to allow future office development. I move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. The next item is PUD fifteen ninety-nine. The location is one five one zero one North County Line Road. And that'll move from a AA agricultural district to PUD one five nine nine Plan Unit Development District, Ward Eight.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, this is a rezoning ordinance. It's on final hearing. It was approved by the Planning Commission. The purpose is to permit a commercial office development. There is no opposition, so I'd move for its approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. Next item, number five, PUD one six three four, sixty-four hundred Northeast one hundred twenty-second Street. Rezoning from AA Agricultural District to PUD one six three four. And John, Ward Seven?
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mountain Clerk, anyone signed up to speak? The Planning Commission did approve it with the TEs. And this development is to allow creation of a single-family residential development. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. Item number six, Spud nine five three, located at thirty-seven twenty-five Southwest Twenty-Fourth Street. Rezoning from an R-one single-family residential to C-three community commercial district. Ward Three. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up?
No, sir.
This is to bring this property into compliance. The property is immaculately maintained. The gentleman who owns it is a landscape contractor, and so I move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and that's approved unanimously. Next item, SPUD nine five four, one one four one five Northwestern Avenue. Rezoning from an R-one single-family residential district to a Spud nine fifty-four. Ed?
This had unanimous Planning Commission approval and no protesters, so I move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. Item number eight, Spud nine five five, one nine oh-one and one nine oh-five Northwest Twenty-seventh Street. Ed?
Same situation, so I move for approval.
Okay, moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. Next, Spud nine six zero, located at one zero five zero one South Harvey from agriculture to Spud nine sixty simplified plan unit development district. Francis, is there anybody here to speak on this item? It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. No protests. I move for approval. Okay, all those in favor? It's approved unanimously. Next is item B, ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval for a special permit to operate a commercial blood center use in a C-three community commercial district. The address is twenty-nine thirty Southwest Fifty-ninth Street. And Larry, that's in Ward Three.
Yes, this is a shopping center, the Amonte Shopping Center, that has gone through a transition over the last several years. And that transition has been in a downward direction. This will help stabilize it. That same shopping center is being recommended for a permanent library in that area. So this is going to bring some new life back to there. Has anyone signed up to protest?
No, sir.
Having nobody signed up to protest, I move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. Thank you, Larry. Item number C. Vacating a twenty-foot wide alley extending a hundred and fifty-seven feet west of South EK Gaylord Boulevard, five fifteen South EK Gaylord Boulevard. And this is in Ward Seven, John.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mountain Clerk, anyone signed up to speak? No one signed up to speak. The Planning Commission did approve this. And this is to allow for a development of a hotel. I do move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and it's approved unanimously. Item D. Related to businesses, street sidewalks, general schedules of fees, amending chapter thirteen of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code dated 2010, amending section thirteen dash four oh-two related to paving contractor license and amending chapter fifty of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code dated 2010, amending section fifty dash one twenty-seven licensing of paving contractors. Section fifty-one thirty-six sidewalk contractor license required. Section fifty-one thirty-seven. So, Jim, any comments on this particular item?
This is the?
Final hearing?
Yeah, the final hearing. We've had presentations on this from Paul Ronson a couple of weeks ago. And this is really to get information and training for folks doing sidewalk work and right away to make sure that they are aware of ADU requirements.
Right. Okay. And it's approved unanimously. Another ordinance on final hearing related to, oh, we have?
That's been deferred.
Deferred, I'm sorry. So item E has been deferred. Then item F. Ordinance on final hearing related to general schedule of fees.
These are the fees for the Parks Department for their summer programs. And Doug Cupford did a presentation on this a few weeks ago also.
Okay. It's approved unanimously. Now, item G one, public hearing on dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here signed up to speak on these items? Okay, it's approved unanimously. Item number two, resolution declaring structures are dilapidated. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Item H, public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anybody here signed up to speak? And it's approved unanimously. Item I, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anybody here signed up to speak on abandoned buildings? It's approved unanimously. Item J, these items are to be removed from the abandoned building list. Anybody here to speak on these items? Okay, it's approved unanimously. Okay, the next item is a public hearing concerning the consolidation plan and second action year plan to allocate one point one million dollars in community development block grant.
And Chris Varga from the Planning Department is here to outline those for us today on items both K one and, or K one and two and L one and two.
Good morning. I'm Chris Varga from the Planning Division and I manage the Housing and Community Development Division. On item K one, before you hear, is just to move one point one million dollars. That's in this year's budget. It was not allocated before it was generated through program income. We just need to move that to a line item so that we can start expenditures on that. We have wanted to move it to what we call the Community Development and Public Facilities Program. And that type of a program covers a variety of options. Could be parks, streets, sidewalks. Could be also nonprofit facilities that do public services. And we've had a number of interested parties apply to us for funding for that that are still being vetted. So we propose to move that money there for this time so that we can expend it prior to next year's action plan if that's, an opportunity arises.
Chris, are these dollars that could, for instance, be considered for the Head Start program?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, all those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Okay, item K, this is our, this year's consolidated plan, third-year action plan that we're required to submit to HUD. And this measures to get your approval to submit this information. If you recall, the consolidated plan is a five-year plan that we're required to do as our application for entitlement funds to HUD on four specific grant programs, particularly the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, the Home Investments Partnerships Program, and the HAPWA, the Housing for Persons with AIDS. So each year, we prepare an action plan that serves as our application for that year's budget funding that's consistent with the five-year consolidated plan. The types of things that we fund with the HUD grants, a variety of things. A lot of them have to do with housing. Housing rehab, housing development, home buyer assistance, neighborhood revitalization. It's a key factor. We can also focus on some community development initiatives and economic development initiatives. And we also, the ESG grant is focused on homeless assistance. Our formula grant funding, as you can see collectively, last year was around seven million dollars. That funding varies a little bit from year to year. And as you probably are aware, the president's budget proposed to eliminate both CDBG and home in its entirety this year. So we are hopeful that that does not happen. And we don't know what kind of cuts to expect. So this year's funding is a bigger question mark than usual. The way we have set up this proposal today, though, is if we have a slight budget modifications within fifteen percent of our expectations and we program this year's budgets as equal to last year's money in each category, if it's within fifteen percent, we can modify the community development program budget line item. If it's substantially more than that, then we'll have to come back with a substantial amendment and rework the projects. With the home, the budget's changes will be proportionate for anything that we've not yet expended. Our CDBD statutory objective is all about serving people of low and moderate income. It's to provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities. It's probably the most flexible grant money that we have. And when we're talking about low mod incomes, as HUD defines them, it's persons that make less than eighty percent of average median income. And HUD derives that from our census tract data, but they do a whole MSA kind of calculation. but they do a whole MSA kind of calculation. It's not specific to Oklahoma City, but based on their information and numbers that we have to use, that's for a family of four that makes about $51,600, and one single person making $36,150. So, basically, over 40% of our population in Oklahoma City is less than 80% AMA and would qualify for some of these programs, and it impacts 95,000 households. This map just shows you, basically, the green is the low mod area census tracts. The outlined in red is what we call the NERSA, the Neighborhood Revitalization Stabilization Area, and that is a specific area that has been approved by HUD, and as being appropriate to expend a majority of our funds there and meeting, needing some revitalization efforts. So, our plan requires 80% of our funds to be spent within that area. Again, I said it was a focus on housing. Most of the persons in low mod households, many are housing burdening, meaning they're paying over 30% of their income on housing, their rent, mortgage, and utilities to be included. If you're at the lower end of the pay spectrum, this does not leave you enough money to buy food and medicine and other needed things you need. So, they're considered housing burdened. So, both, we have a shortage of quantity of housing units for the low mod population that these folks can afford, and I believe much of this housing and the pricing, price range that they can afford is substandard. So, our housing rehab programs, a lot of our money goes to that in-house. We operate these programs. We do exterior maintenance, go back, ready, exterior maintenance, interior whole house rehabs, and the home does whole house rehabs as well. The exterior maintenance is our hemp program. It focuses on a lot of people on code violations, so we help those who can't afford try and get back into code. Most of those are grants, some of these are loans for our interior whole house rehab, and these are all for low modic income homeowners. We have a two-to-three-year waiting list because we don't have enough money to get out the door to get these things done any faster. We also expend money on the Emergency Home Repair Program. We subcontract this out to Community Action Agency, but they, we give them about $587,000 each year to do home improvements, emergency things such as plumbing, water, and sewer. And last year, they did 104 homes. We also do safe rooms and storm shelters, a new program we started doing in the last couple of years. So far, we put those in mostly when we do whole house rehabs, and we do 10 to 15 of those a year. Other places we spend our CDBG money is on public services. We typically give money to the Sheriff Fair Program that provides free and reduced bus and taxi fare to our seniors or disabled and our homeless so that they can get to their medical appointments and other needs. Fair, Metro Fair Housing is the city's branch for doing our fair housing monitoring and complaint resolution work on behalf of us, so they're part of our administrative funding. Graffiti removal is another program we do. We also give money to secure abandoned properties. Our community and economic arm, we have some small business training that Community Action Agency does. We have a small business revolving loan fund, both in-house and through Community Action Agency. We've given Section 108 loans to various entities, our most recent being the 21C Hotel and Museum 108. That particular money doesn't come out of our budget, but we have to pledge our CDBG as collateral. We also give money each year to Ocura, the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority, for their slum and blight activities. They're reaching out and doing some affordable housing work and some low mod benefit area work. They can, they're planning on doing some acquisition and remove the blighted structures next year. And then, our SNI programs is funded through this. I think you've probably heard other presentations on SNI, but basically, we have our three selected neighborhoods. Our Classens North Highland Park neighborhood is winding up and being removed from SNI this summer because they have, in fact, revitalized. We are continuing to work on Classen Tin Pan and Culbertson's East Highland for the upcoming year, and in those neighborhoods, we do a variety of functions, sidewalk installation, park projects, new home building, trees planted, et cetera. And one of our biggest projects we completed last year that I hope you've all had the opportunity to see is the Fremant Harn Gardens Park in Classen North Highland Park. That was in cooperation with the Parks Department, and we did get a Keep Oklahoma Beautiful Environmental Excellence Award, and it's a really nice little park that a lot of people are enjoying. This is the Community Development Program, this Public Facilities Lines that I mentioned and was related to the last council item as well. We can use that for internal projects and parks, community centers, facilities for persons with special needs, domestic violence shelters, et cetera. And one of our last projects that we funded last year was $510,000 to the care center, the rehab of these five older buildings. We have done internal and external rehab, point tucking, structural stabilization, repair of heating systems, and air conditioning systems, really good projects for dealing with kids who are suffering from amuse. Our Home Investment Partnership Program is a smaller grant that is all related to affordable Certain proportion of the home program has to be spent through community housing development organizations, our Chodos, which we have three, Jefferson Park Association, the Positively Paseo Association, and Neighborhood Housing Services, and they have to have a nonprofit as their mission to build affordable housing. So, they have built about 40 homes, and they focus in our SNI areas. We also can use our money for home rental housing, some of our latest projects, well, I think the latest one we did was the West Town Single Room Occupancy, the, that's built at the homeless campus. And we also, last year, did the Meadow Cliff Apartments Rehabilitation, put $400,000 into their projects for senior living. Okay, we also have a home down payment assistance program that gives up to $15,000 for qualifying low-income families who are wanting to buy a home. Then, the Emergency Solutions Grant is all about our homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing efforts and onsite shelter care assistance. Emergency Solutions Grant last year was about $388,987. We served almost 5,000 people last year, plus the, supporting the heart line, the heart line, phone assistance line, and we provide meals, legal assistance, health care services, substance abuse treatment, a variety of things through 11 different social service agencies that we contract with. And finally, we have our homeless assistance through the Journey Home OKC Program. That is funded both by ESG and by our Continuum of Care Program. It used to be known as the 100,000 Homes Campaign, but in, basically, last year, we housed 238 chronic homeless and 179 homeless vets. Our program has a very good success rate, a 98% housing retention rate of those who are housed longer than six months, which is very good statistically. Our final program under the entitlement is our housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, and basically, that's for persons having AIDS and their families, helping them with rental assistance, housing if they needed, health care, and mental health support services. So, basically, that's an overview of our programs, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of them or the packet information that you have in front of you.
Chris, are we doing some crisis planning just in case, you know, the budget cuts all of these allocations? I mean, what do we do?
These are the only monies we have to fund these programs.
Right. I mean, and that's, those of us that serve on your Social Services Committee, you know, are aware that these are the dollars that we spend.
These are all we have, so if the programs go away, I assume they go away unless we find other city funds somewhere or other ways to take care of them.
I hoping, I hope we're making our voice heard, and we all need to make it heard because this would be devastating to our community if we lost these dollars.
I certainly agree. I just want to thank you for all the work you do, which is incredibly important. Thanks for this presentation. The numbers you put up in the beginning are disturbing. I guess they shouldn't be surprising. We've got 23% of people in the greater Oklahoma City metro area living below the poverty line. That's basically one out of four people, and I think you're showing that many, many more than that even are struggling with, with housing. Would, two questions on the crisis management that Meg brought up. What would happen if you, since we use these funds as collateral for the 21C loan, what happens if you lose the funds?
I don't know. HUD hasn't addressed that question. Now, 21C does have other collateral in place as well. HUD's been a little worried that CDBG might be cut or eliminated at some point, so they haven't allowed that as 100% collateral in the past few years. So, we do have some for them, but in theory, if lock grant goes away, I don't know if they'd ask us to pay it through other funds or how that would be addressed.
Okay, but we could potentially be, they could call it to, you'd have to pay it through the general fund potentially?
Well, we definitely have a note. We, the city, have a note for this, and then we pass along the note to 21C, so the city does have a loan.
I can't imagine that they would do away with CDBG entirely, but I guess nothing would surprise me at this point. So, since we're considering, we've talked about affordable housing as part of the economics incentives program on the GO bond. I mean, is that, has that come into the conversation on crisis management, or could those funds end that scenario where you?
I'm hopeful that those funds will come to pass and that we can do some, some positive things to support these programs with that. I don't know that we have any of the details or even concurrence on that approach yet.
Chris, thank you. Your reports are always so interesting, and as everyone has indicated already, these programs reach so many people, it's hard to think what would happen if they all went away. And thank you again for identifying, you know, not only do we have a large percentage living below the poverty line, but 40% of the citizens make less than 80% of the AIM, the-
AMI, the average median income.
Yeah.
And in fact, in Oklahoma City, they actually make even a little bit less if you didn't use the MSA statistical analysis.
I see. Well, again, thank you for the report. Very interesting.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we need to approve Item L. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you. I don't think we need executive session on Item M. Is that-
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll just accept a motion for approval.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and it's approved unanimously. Next is Item N, and do we need executive?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion to move Item N to executive.
Yeah, I meant to executive session.
And it's approved unanimously. And then, Item O?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need executive session for Item O. I'll accept a motion to move to executive session on this item.
Same motion for Item F.
Thank you. It's approved. Now, Item P, Claims Recommended for Denial. Is there anybody here signed up to speak on items recommended for denial? It's approved unanimously. Item A, Claims Recommended for Approval. Is there anybody here signed up to speak on these items?
Yeah.
Okay, it's approved. Next is items from council, and we'll begin with Larry's ordinance that's up for final hearing. Larry, would you like to lead us in this discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to, okay, to, just refresh your memory, several weeks ago, we started looking at, is there something that we could do, especially in some of our older neighborhoods, to give some relief with respect to parking problems and also with respect to parking on non-conforming driveways? And a consortium of people were brought together, including legal and development services. The solution that they came up with was giving the, one of, one of our groups the, the option of appealing to our Board of Adjustment to handle special cases where maybe a driveway was non-conforming, but the solution to it was, was causing people not to be able to even park anywhere near their house, and so to give the Board of Adjustment an opportunity to hear these cases at a reasonable fee of $100 so that our people could get some relief. This was not intended to write a blank check to people to say, "You can park anywhere you want on your house and do whatever you want." This is for those people who have a legitimate need. We have some people in this city who purposefully violate our ordinance as far as parking and driveway uses, and this would, the, hopefully, the Board of Adjustment would not approve any dispensation for their case. So, this is for people who have a legitimate need for parking, some variance on the parking regulations on their house, or the use of what's called a non-conforming driveway, and I hope that you all will approve it.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second? Any discussion on this?
The only thing I'd ask Kenny is, having sat on the Board of Adjustment, there will be some explanation, some materials given to the board members so they'll understand the significance of this.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's vote on this, and it's approved unanimously. Thank you, Larry. Other items from Council, James, Ed, Larry, anything else? Todd? Okay. Meg, John, Mark?
Go Thunder.
Yeah, we need that. Yeah, it's time to pull in all stops right now. Thank you. Okay. Jim, I'm going to turn it over to you from here on out.
Great, thank you. Our first item is to have a presentation about the Myriad Gardens Foundation, and we're blessed this afternoon, or this morning, to have Maureen Hefferman here to share with us all the activities at the Myriad Gardens.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Well, I'm happy to report today on things that we've done over the past year and some projects that we're planning for this year. So, this is just to show you some of the things that we do. It's not everything, but some of the highlights, and I'd also like to report on our public-private agreement in terms of supporting the gardens. Do you want me to? Well, I'll take you through a little bit. This is somewhat in chronological order, but we start our year with a wonderful horticultural program, and this is our core mission, to create and maintain beautiful gardens and grounds, and also to promote horticultural education for all ages, and this has been a terrific program for us. And all the things that I'm showing you today, just about all of them, somehow or another, they're connected to raising income to support the gardens because we really want to achieve our goal of the Myriad Foundation supplying 66% of the annual budget, and we're on our way to do that. So, that's why we do so many things, is not only to serve the public, but, but to raise income. In the spring, I hope you all got to see all of the bulbs that we've planted. This has become very, very popular with people, and we're trying to increase the number of bulbs that we plant every year. It's really spectacular. It's, it's very cheerful and joyful, and people love this. And we're really very appreciative to have a major grant from the RAP Foundation. It's a local foundation, and they've given us a challenge grant of $200,000, and if we can match that over four years, we will have, we'll start a permanent endowment of $400,000 so our spring bulbs display can really be nationally known. I mean, if you can imagine in a few more years, if we can triple what we currently do, how stunning that would be and what an attraction it would be for people to come and visit locally and beyond. And the public has just embraced this so much. They come and take pictures. They just want to sit in the bulbs. We have lots of baby pictures with people plunking their babies right in the middle of the- We have lots of baby pictures with people plunking their babies right in the middle of the bulb beds. It's just a really happy experience. This bed that you see behind these children, we are planting that into an annual bed this year with lots of new cultivars that are Oklahoma-proven, and it will show all the annuals in a rainbow of colors that are really tough and hearty, and a lot of them conserve water. This is a new event we're putting on in a couple of weeks. This is to help us raise $50,000 this year for our bulb match. So this will be taking place Thursday, May 11th. It is open to the public. You can get more information about it on our website. The Myriad Gardens, we've been attracting more national publicity, and we had a great write-up in Southern Living recently, how we were one of the top southern botanical gardens. It wrote a lot about our conservatory and different programs. Every spring, we put on a new event in the Crystal Bridge to make it an attraction for people to come back and visit, and we had a terrific season this year. It just ended a few weeks ago. And I think this is a... I think the conservatory really... in some ways, it's an undervalued jewel for the city. A lot of people have gone to it, but maybe haven't visited in a number of years. But they really should because we've got a top curator, and he really makes sure there's very interesting exhibits in there and lots of flowers all the time. In our lobby, we change that out frequently. We focus on mostly local artists, and we paired this particular cloud exhibit with cloud haikus for the month of April, Poetry Month. We've added a gift shop in our visitor lobby, which is open every day, Monday through Sunday. So we urge people to come and shop. It supports the gardens, and it features mostly all Maine and Oklahoma products. This is a poetry exhibit we'll be doing over the next couple of months. We received a grant from the National Endowment for the Humanities. Mary Oliver is a wonderful, wonderful poet who writes extensively about plants and nature, and so we'll be featuring her poetry throughout the gardens. You can come and walk and see her poems exhibited. We're doing lots of programs for children in school groups. We had a whole week this year of spring break activities, St. Patrick's Day. When the parade was canceled this year, we had a lot of people come out to the gardens to enjoy it. So we try to celebrate most holidays and seasons, do something fun at the gardens. Our egg hunt this year, we had about 400 children and their parents. And this year, one of my staff, she was really very sharp to do this. She was reading about sensory-sensitive Easter egg hunts. So these are for children who may be autistic or have other special needs, who don't do well in this very high adrenaline atmosphere of a regular Easter egg hunt. So we staged a quieter one indoors a few days before this, which we had about 80 children and their parents. And it was really wonderful to do for the community, and we hope to expand that. And more events that would lend itself to that, we'll try to include. The dog Easter egg hunt, that's really popular, too. We had 105 dogs out on the great lawn, so it's a lot of fun. These are some things that we've been doing over the past few years, where we've had a few areas that needed fixing or renovating. We just replanted our east and west lake terraces to a different kind of grass than what was originally planted a few years ago, and they look beautiful now. So that really has helped the whole lake area look much more beautiful. And this is an area, the circle there, that is one of the last areas that we need to really fix and renovate. From the original redesign a few years ago, they had put some azalea plantings in there, but it really wasn't the right conditions for them, and they died out. We had to take them out. So we looked at that, and we thought, instead of replanting it, let's think about a new shade garden site because in the summer, you can't have enough shade for people to enjoy. And so from private donations, we're building a new shade garden there. It's not a big area, but it's going to be a beautiful garden within a garden feeling, and it's going to be quite lovely. It'll be a stone terrace. There'll be a low, winding brick wall. And the centerpiece is a... it's going to be a water feature shaped like a magnolia blossom. So it will be more of a sculpture-type water feature, but it will be really beautiful. It will look out towards the great lawn, so I think it'll be a great place for reading or lunch. We're going to put a chess table out there. People can play. So it will be a lovely garden within a garden that will be built this summer, will plant it in the fall. So it will be done by the end of the year. This is a new event we're doing this year, so we really become the heart of garden events in the city, hopefully. We're putting on OKC Garden Fest in cooperation with two local nurseries. And so on May 13th, we're having about 40 vendors and lots of plants for sale, garden-related items, arts, crafts, foods. It should be really terrific. We're hoping for a big, big crowd on May 13th. We're working with the Water Utility Trust. They have given us a grant to work with them to put on different programs throughout the year and exhibits on how to save water in your yard. So we'll be doing everything from a water conservation school we just finished on Saturday to we're putting in a buffalo grass area to show people buffalo grass, what it looks like, how you can grow it, and it takes much less water than normal turf. So we're doing things like this to help with water conservation messages. This is our prairie garden, which has been really popular. We're putting signage out there now so people understand it's not a traditional garden. It's meant to be a prairie and pollinator preserve. But it's been really popular, and this is also used for water conservation because all of these plants, once they're established, they really don't need water, and they're great for helping pollinators, butterflies, bees to support them. This year, we started last year, but this year, we're really going to expand it quite a bit, is do a large event to really promote tree planting in the city. So we're working with the Treebank Foundation, and we hope we can get up to 500 trees given away or sold at very low pricing, lots of education about how to plant them properly, how to care for them, what trees that are utility-friendly, what grows well in urban areas. So we'll be doing that in the fall, and we hope that grows to be a really big event to help green the city. Here's some pictures of our playground, which is very popular. We have a real push for literacy and people coming to the children's garden. Our porch has books on it. We have Storytime. Every year, we featured... we bring a book to life. This was Charlotte's Web. We did the Jungle Book, and this year, it's The Very Hungry Caterpillar. So if you have young children, you know this is a popular book, so that will be brought to life in really creative ways. And this event in our fall, Pumpkinville, are major fundraisers for us. They bring over $100,000 and lots of new members, so they're really wonderful events, but they're important financially for us. We're doing a Father's Day run in the garden. We couldn't do the 5K because of the street. I think Sheridan will be closed due to the streetcar, so this will be in the garden, which will be a lot of fun. Mud Day, we do creative things. This is a kind of a quirky event, but it is so popular where we're doubling the number of kids we can have this year, so we try to do fun things. And they get to wash off in the thunder fountain. We do lots of educational programs for schools and formal education throughout the year. We just renovated our great lawn two years ago, and that is doing really well, the new turf. This gets so much use between what we do and community events, so we really take care of the lawn. Also, as a benefit event to, again, raise money for our share of the budget, we do special events. This is a out... last year, we did our Splendor in the Gardens. It's really a wonderful outdoor farm-to-table dinner, and this netted over $150,000 for us. And we do dinner series in the summer as well, so just go to our website. We've got all the information if you'd like to take part in that. Shakespeare in the Park will be back. We have the Sunday Twilight Concerts also that is put on by the Arts Council. Our summer movies will be returning. That is extremely popular. We almost need a bigger lawn. We're getting kind of full on that. We do lots of recreational and wellness programs, yoga programs. We've tried some paddle boarding the last couple of years with the Boathouse Foundation. Our Full Moon Bike and Ride continues to be popular. We're bringing that back this year. Dancing in the Gardens, another fun event. This is starting on May 5th with salsa dancing for Cinco de Mayo. And we are bringing in a new operator for our seasonal café, and we're really pleased. We offered the position to Pitchfork in the Park. They're a young couple. They've had a very successful food cart, food truck, the last few years. It's one of the top two at Blue Garden. So Andra and Jacob Conger will be running that. We'll be having a soft opening on May 1st... sorry, May 2nd, but our official opening will be May 13th. So they've got a great menu. We have invested in an ice cream machine. So we're going to... we hope it becomes a patio for ice cream, especially in the evening, to come out and enjoy that or have your dessert there, have kids. We've learned some lessons from the past operator and some of the reasons in hindsight why it didn't make. So we've... we're rebranding it. The menu has faster items. It will be faster to produce. The menu's a little less expensive. It's very affordable for families. So we think with some of the changes, we've put lighting out on the patio, that it will become a gathering place for people to enjoy. So that is upcoming soon. Pumpkinville will be returning. This has become a really big event for us. This has earned over $150,000 for us. We get lots of new members every year, and people really just love it. So we will try to make that a little bit bigger and better every year for the community. Our ice rink season this year was, even with some bad weather weekends, this continues to grow. We had over 37,000 skaters, so this was our biggest season yet. And we added these little bears this year, which are for kids to use or a handicapped child can sit on the front of it and be pushed, and those have been really popular. So as you can see, we're trying to add some things like that to our program so it's more accessible for the community. We had our carousel last year, and this is how we get the word out to people. Our publications for members, our Facebook, Twitter, Instagram continues to grow. And most people, I think, now look at those things to know what we're doing and our website. These are some numbers from typically what we've done in the last couple of years in a year's time. This just reflects things that we can count or that we can estimate. So things from the carousel to ice skating to Crystal Bridge visitors, we've had a little over 92,000, to our programs, to people who rent the grounds and put on major events. So we try our best to estimate those, hopefully conservatively. And so there's been about 242,000 people who've been at an event at the gardens, and that doesn't include all the casual visitors. So I would think we have at least over a half a million people a year coming to the gardens. We're asked that a lot, and that's the best estimate I can give. And volunteers, we continue to grow our volunteers. We have dozens of really reliable folks who help out with everything that we do. This is our membership growth. For the last several years, you can see how that is growing. And this is the progress that we've shown in our public-private partnership. So when the foundation took on the management of the gardens, it was really contributing 24% of the annual budget. Today, we're at 57%. So the Myriad Gardens Foundation, through donations, through earned income, is providing or will provide in this new budget year, fiscal year, 57% of our budget, which is about 4.1, 4.2 million. So our goal is to get to 66%, so we will hopefully get there. I would like to think in two or three years, hopefully, we'll be at that mark. And this is just another slide showing this in the budget. So the new fiscal year is about 4.2, and we did cut our management fee that we get from the City of Oklahoma City by 4% this year. And I just wanted to end with this. This shows you the Myriad Gardens, that renovation, that work, and then you can see to the south of that where the new park will be. And I just wanted to say that we're really... feel very proud, and we have a real sense of responsibility being asked now to also take on the management of that, and so we are working on that. And we really want to make that an incredible experience for people, that it's... it will be beautiful, maintained well, have terrific programs. It's great that we're able to do this because we can hopefully manage both so they're not competing with each other. They can complement each other, and we really look forward to doing that. So, any questions?
I was in a meeting yesterday up on the 31st floor of a building downtown, and we took a break, and I walked over to the window, and I looked out, and there were the gardens, and they were just so impressive, so beautiful. And so the view from above is incredible, too, and I just want to thank everybody on the foundation for doing a job well done, very well done.
I just want to thank Maureen. She's really done a great job, and obviously, it's... the byproduct is the financing. That's really good, and that's really important that's coming out. But she's only doing that because we're able to do that because of the quality staff, the quality program she puts in and taking risks and making changes down there, and I really appreciate it, and I'm really pleased that she's going to be involved with the new park, which bids next week, by the way.
And we have through... I mean, with our budget, the foundation has been able to reduce the city's share over the last five-year share by $1 million, so we hope to keep that going down.
Maureen, it is a spectacular place. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Doug Dollar is here this morning to talk to us about an innovation regarding what makes cities work.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're excited to report that Oklahoma City's been selected to work with the Bloomberg Philanthropies What Works Cities Initiative. Launched by Bloomberg Philanthropies in 2015, What Works Cities is a national initiative working with 77 cities currently to enhance their use of data and evidence to improve services, inform local decision-making, and engage residents. The first partner that we're going to be working with is the Behavioral Insights Team, also known as the BIT team. And the BIT team works across a wide range of government policy areas around the world, devising new ways of making public services work better for the people they serve and testing the impact using empirical research methods. So the Behavioral Insights Team members will hold a workshop next week for all our department heads on Wednesday, May 3rd, to kick off the effort, and then we'll be working with their team to apply those principles in several areas that we're working to identify right now. And the goal of the project is not just improvement in those areas, but to build up the capacity within our organization to implement these evaluations on a regular and ongoing basis throughout the city. And just kind of an example of what the type of work it might be, something like, maybe we have correspondence with residents or businesses, maybe to get them to renew a permit or sign up for some service. The BIT team would help us look at different ways we could craft the message and maybe develop a couple of different options for conveying that message. We send option A to one group of folks, option B to another, and see which one gets the better response so that over time, we can begin to really hone in our message to get the best possible response. The second group we're going to be working with is the Government Performance Lab at Harvard's Kennedy School of Government. Their group conducts research on how governments can improve the results they achieve for their citizens through our procurement process. And a formal memorandum of understanding will be coming to the council in the coming weeks. They'll be developed with the Government Performance Lab to outline the scope of work. We're tentatively planning on examining our procurement process for road construction contracts to see how we can attract more vendors and improve our outcomes there. So the selection of Oklahoma City by Bloomberg Philanthropies and What Works Cities Initiative is an exciting opportunity for the city. We fully expect that these projects and the knowledge they've gained... that we'll gain through the connection with other What Works Cities will help us to enhance the services we provide our residents. We also expect these efforts will further strengthen our credibility with residents as an organization that bases decisions on data and operates in a way that is accessible and transparent. So thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
We were chosen for this, so it was a process, and we're very proud. We've been chosen to be a part of this, and we hope it will provide some positive results for our citizens. The last thing I want to highlight on the items from City Manager were the sales tax collections for April. The month it was down $1.1 million or 6.2%. That's kind of what Russell Evans said it was going to be, is we're going forward. And then he said that it's going to turn around and hopefully that those negative checks will lessen and turn positive either in June or July, so we're looking forward to that. Overall, we're down $7.7 million, but we've kind of plugged that in. This doesn't change our budget projections for next year. This is all kind of, as Doug Dollar says, it's baked into the budget already so that we're good to go with it. It's negative, but that's what our budget is projected, so this won't have a negative effect, a further negative effect on our budget preparation.
Thank you, Jim. Now we have citizens to be heard. Joe Sarge Nelson?
How y'all, City Hall and the group up there? Hadn't been here in a little while, but... Hadn't been here in a little while, but I wanted to compliment you all on the program. It was really nice today. I enjoyed that. Very informative. Anytime you learn something out of it, you've got, you've got a good thing going. The reason I'm here today, I have five reasons I'm here. One of them was to commend the mayor and his article in the Daily Oklahoman where he's proposing shifting the Maps 3 to the police and the streets. It was a fine article. It was written by city reporter William Crum, who's up there, and I really enjoyed that. Let you all know, I do keep on top of what the city goes on, and I'm not always here on a bad note. And the second one was by Steve Lackmeyer, and I really enjoyed that also in the paper, taking it to the streets. And it shows me that you people are on the uptake, and I enjoy that. And you know me, the last few years, I've been down here griping, name-calling, a few other odds and ends, but the basic thing is, one of them, is when I was on the campaign trail, I had Dollar to meet Mr. Todd Stone and watch him operate, and I have to commend him. He did a fine job. For a while, I didn't think he was going to pull it out against a couple of them, especially one of them, but you came out, and you came out fine. The only thing I can advise, I can give you is three things, and I'd like to just kind of read them so you'll know exactly what I'm trying to say. I personally think that you have the ability to do what you're capable of doing. You have the motivation. Of course, naturally, that determines what you do. And you have the attitude which determines how well you do it. And I'm going to leave the other line alone because it would kind of stir up bad feelings all over again. Only thing I can recommend is use your own assessment, your own mind, read your material, and then make your own judgment. There's eight people up here, including the mayor's nine, and the city council, and of course, the city manager, Mr. Couch, and believe it or not, Ms. Cursey, I honestly believe she's the backbone. She puts all this together. I wouldn't want your job for nothing. And, but you've done a fine job, and don't be bamboozled. Now, the next reason, and the last one will put a sour note on the reason I'm here. A few weeks ago, after I got out of the hospital, I was taken out to eat by my spouse and my family, and I went to Abel's Mexican Restaurant. I didn't even know it existed, and I drove up and down MacArthur, I don't know how many times a day. It's way off on the side over there, you don't even know. You think it's in a closed shopping center. And while we were sitting there ordering, my councilman walked in, shook his hand, and I met the handshake literally, but as I sat there, I got more disturbed as to why you were there, giving that gentleman in the corner in your casual dress attire, talking about the mayor's, how much money he made, not only besides what he made as a city manager, I mean, as a city mayor. And that upset me, and I turned around to my spouse and I asked, I says, "Why is he discussing this, the mayor's salary and the other people's business at the city hall with this gentleman? I never seen him in city hall at all." And then when he turned right around, he said, made reference to the big mess that Ward 7, Pettis got us into, and that offended me. It really did, because I noticed the nice new street that you put in out by a block from your house, from 10th all the way up Ann Arbor to 23rd, because I drive that five times a day. It needed it, but you did it at a poised time, especially before the election. And whether that had anything to do with it or not, the street was badly needed. And I, for one, I resent talking behind people's backs. I really do. I've had a lot of it done in mine, and I usually go right to the face of the person that said it. But not only was I there, my wife was there, and the people that sit in front of you overheard it. And Frances came over and asked me, she says, "Does that guy work for the city?" And I said, "Yeah, he's my city councilman. He works out in this area." And she says, "Well, he was sure unloading a lot on that man over there. I don't know what that was about, but he said he had some big ideas that he had in mind." And I said, "You just stay out of it." I said, "I tell you right now, tell you no for sure what you're talking about, don't say anything." But I was there and heard those two for sure. And I don't know about you, but that's not the way to run that position." And I was offended, and I do apologize on my behalf for even bringing it up in front of Mr. Pettis, but I'm sure they should, both, and the mayor wasn't here, and I'd compliment him again on that. David, thank you very much. You did a nice job, council, all of you. And I apologize for dampening the reason I came. But Todd, stay in there, act like a bull, treat it like a bull, but do it right. Thank you for talking to me.
Thank you. We are going to now move to executive session.